I would like to call the July meeting for the Auburn Planning Commission to order.
Dana Kemp.
Here.
Nonette Reese.
Here.
Robin Bridges.
Here.
Warren McCourt.
Here.
Bob Ryanbaugh.
Here.
Wendy Birmingham. David Wisdom.
Here.
Joseph A. Strupp.
Here.
Phil Chancellor.
Here.
Thank you. Before we start, I'd like to give a brief overview of the process and the public meeting of the Auburn City Planning Commission. The commission is presented with agenda items by the City Planning Department. Representative for each agenda item will have the opportunity to make comments and address any specific questions from the commission. I will then open a public hearing in which you have the opportunity to speak upon the item at hand. And once everyone is heard, we will then take it upon the City Planning Commissioners and staff to make a decision. Both City Commissioners take into account the agenda items for discussion, motions, and a vote, and the commission will then vote based on local laws, city comprehensive plan 2030, and the good of the community. We will get started. If anyone would like to come forward with citizens communication about something that is not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no one, we will move to our consent agenda for the evening. It has meeting minutes from our June Packet Meeting and regular meeting, as well as one annexation and a final plat.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to new business. Tonight, we have a little bit of a different start. We have the first five items are annexations, none of which require a public hearing at this time, so it will be a lot of discussion between staff and commissioners. So, we will start with the first one.
Thank you. So, this is the Yarmio Annexation, and I guess kind of I want to provide a little context for why there are annexations that are not accompanied by rezonings that have been pulled off of the consent agenda and given individual items. So, there if you've looked at the packet, so there are several things in the agenda that are annexations that are outside of the optimal boundary. And Planning Commission has been presented the proposed update to the optimal boundary that would include several of these annexations. But, these, this proposed update has not been approved, has not been seen, has not been adopted by the City Council yet. And so, since they have not been adopted by the City Council yet, the feeling was that they should have their own item for consideration instead of just being given the consent that, like a traditional annexation, not accompanied by a rezoning, that they should just go to council and go through the process. But, since it is outside of the optimal boundary and not adopted by the City Council, that is why they're giving their own items. And there are other ones that are on roads that are not technically, that are not maintained by the city, that would then kind of add to the threshold of the city having to get, the city getting closer to maintaining that road. And so, just in that vein of thought, that was the reasoning for pulling these annexations off of the consent agenda, pulling them off the consent agenda and giving them their own item. I don't know why I can't say agenda tonight, but that's why. So, I guess you'll see on the prox maps and the optimal boundary maps, just kind of what the additions are and the proposed land use and proposed future land use changes associated with them. So, and this is one of them. So, anyone have any questions about that?
Yes, I do. So, if we, with the current draft update of the optimal boundary, would that include all of these annexations?
Yes. And so, all the annexations that are before us tonight are either already in the optimal boundary, or they are in the proposed update to the optimal boundary.
But there's no actual rush to make these annexations as far as the city is concerned. In other words, would we not be presumptive of the City Council's decision if we act a positive recommendation on these at this time?
And so, I guess kind of our position on it from the staff side was, since you already presented it to the Planning Commission, and the recommendation was just to the Planning Commission that we'd recommend for approval, and then it'd have to go to the City Council. And so, the City Council still gets final say. It's not like annexations just kind of live here. It's just, once it goes to the City Council, I mean, even with the recommendation from y'all, I mean, they can still opt to deny it. And so, that's why the position was to recommend for approval, even though this wasn't adopted by the City Council.
But the City Council will still have to adopt and approve our optimal boundary changes, right?
Yes, and they can, yes, and they can approve an annexation, like regardless of the optimal boundary anyway.
And was the optimal boundary proposal amendment, was that at the request of the City Council?
Yes, and so, for several of these, so some of them are sustained requests from property owners, and then Hillendale was one of the ones of a different iteration of the council that directed staff to look at including Hillendale within the optimal boundary. And so, for some of the optimal boundary changes, I said, just sustained requests from the property owners that were considering, represented, and then, like I said, on Hillendale, it was one of the direction from council at the time, five years ago, that they look at adding Hillendale to the optimal boundary and bringing it into the city.
But it wasn't at the time.
No, and it is not in the optimal boundary.
Still.
Correct.
When will council be given the proposed?
So, currently, we're working on setting up the work sessions for the comp plan and the future land use. And so, right now, there's just a slew of work sessions that need to be set up. So, that's one of the ones that's going to happen, just kind of late summer, early fall possibly.
So, based on this information, our options are approve and go ahead and send to council, postpone, but we don't know until date certain.
Yeah.
So, there are options for that, right?
Yep.
To do it two months at a time until such time as it's done. Right. Or deny, which doesn't seem like what we're ready to do either.
Basically, we're saying that our, that our optimal boundary plan is obsolete.
No, 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 no. So, and I guess kind of, this is really just, this is in line with the five-year update to the comp plan of just kind of looking at like the corrections that need to be made. So, kind of how we went over in that presentation, there were corrections, there were additions, there were deletions, and so really that kind of balanced it. And so, there are places where the optimal boundary expanded all the way out into Lochepoca. There is places where there were omissions, where it didn't really make sense of how this person even got left out of the optimal boundary in the first place, that bisected neighborhoods. And then, there are other places where there were sustained requests from property owners that the future land use either should change, or that development was kind of coming in and it made sense for the city. And so, if you guys want to reference back to the data that we shared, just kind of around the optimal boundary changes and the future land use changes, there was a balance that did not, you know, disregard the optimal boundary. It wasn't like we went out to the edge of the optimal boundary and added, you know, high density development. It was still rule, and in other places, we took rule out and we added back some. So, I think the overall theme and the ambition around the optimal boundary changes, like I said, were to reflect what was already, what had already developed in some places, but then also to balance, like I said, with taking out and adding some things back. And so, it really just wasn't a haphazard attempt that just kind of like changing boundaries and just kind of on a whim of adding rule or adding density in different places. So, the optimal boundary is still in effect, and like it's still governed by the sewer watershed, still governed by road maintenance, what makes sense from a traffic circulation standpoint. So, all the plans that we utilized to go into the optimal boundary, those things are still in effect, and those are things that we still consider when we make recommendations about the optimal boundary. So, I'd say the optimal boundary is still kind of the guiding for annexations for us.
And I understand that, and I appreciate that that is still the case. But, the optimal boundary is just one thing. What about these roads and some of these potential annexation items that are not paved, that we don't currently maintain as a city, as municipality? What about city services, school buses, et cetera?
Yeah, and so, I think those would be some of the discussions that we have once we get to the work session standpoint, like with the council about kind of working with the schools, if they have opinions. And I've talked to them, just kind of briefing them on some of the comp plan updates. They are very firm on, if it's outside of the optimal boundary, generally speaking, they do not, they do not support it coming into the city because then those are, if the current property owner understands that those services are going to be denied to them, that there's no guarantee that the future property owner will also feel that way. They might be, they might, they will feel entitled to those services, whether that be trash services, whether that be school buses coming to get their kids. So, they're pretty firm on kind of standing with the optimal boundary in those cases. And so, I guess for tonight, each one of these kind of has, there's staff report for each of them, there's going to be a presentation with them, we'll answer the questions, just kind of associated with them. But, this was the primary discussion that we had at the Packet Lunch Meeting on Monday, just kind of around, they're kind of being a tipping point, just kind of looking at a lot of the annexations, where they're coming in, and then how so many were coming in in rapid succession, and just kind of looking at the city having to expand services, and not necessarily services per se, but the maintenance of a lot of infrastructure and what that was doing to city resources.
Justice Feinger had one point on it. So, there was a point made about the City Council making, approving annexations outside the optimal boundary. We had some discussion about this a while back. That does, that did not, nor does it not, by default, extend the optimal boundary. The optimal boundary has remained the same until the council adopts a new optimal boundary. That is germane to one of these items that's on the agenda tonight because it's, it made that property contiguous, but it did not extend the optimal boundary down.
The optimal boundary was, is, was not set arbitrarily. It was set after thorough study and so forth. And if it needs to be changed, then that's what we need to be doing instead of annexing properties that's outside of it.
Yeah, and so, and so it's kind of the, also the context with this, it's July, school starts in August. And so, there's several people on, there's several people who requested annexation earlier in the year who were, who wanted to wait in. Their main goal was that they want to get their kids into the school system for the school year. And they were kind of understanding that there would be a decision kind of made from the council just kind of around the optimal boundary sometime this summer, sometime. But, since it hasn't happened, it kind of forced a hand of like, well, we would like to get our kids into the school, and so they want a decision on it. And so, that's kind of why there's a slew of annexations on this agenda particularly. And so, that's why, like I said, also, the proposal and the recommendation was made from staff and was presented to the Planning Commission. It just, we just haven't been able to present it to the council yet, and the council hasn't made a decision one way or another. And so, that, that's why, like, they're pulled off as an item that kind of need to have their own discussions. And I guess also, part of that is that we do not want to be presumptive about what the council is going to do. Like I said, I mean, they can still deny it. They could still go to the work session and say, we don't agree with some of these, these are things that we like to change. As I said, these are just recommendations from staff, and the final decision rests with the council. Any more questions about the optimal boundary before we get rolling? All right, all right. So, yeah, yeah. So, we have the Yarmio Annexation. So, the recommendation, so the request is a recommendation to City Council for annexation of approximately 14.84 acres. This is located on Hillendale Drive, I guess this is 660 Lee Road, 25 Hillendale Drive. So, as you can see, if you want to go to the next slide, yeah. So, like we were talking about, so the optimal boundary kind of stops in the middle of this road on Hillendale Drive, and then the property that is immediately north of this property that allows it to be contiguous to the city and eligible for annexation is, was annexed even though it was technically outside of the optimal boundary. And now, from a lot size standpoint, the minimum is three acres this meets. Technically, it's off a road, has direct access to public right-of-way, it meets, but what it does not meet is outside of the optimal boundary. And so, this is one of the ones that was, the recommendation was for approval based on the proposed recommendation that the optimal boundary be updated and expanded to include this lot. But, it currently does not include this lot, and this lot is currently outside the optimal boundary. So, I'd turn it over to you for any questions.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
Does the extension only include that lot?
No, so.
Go beyond?
Yeah, so if you go down, yeah, yeah. So, so the lot, so if you look, the expansion down of the proposed optimal boundary goes down to about the middle of the big lot that's in the, like just south of it. And so, it would include kind of all the existing residents on Hillendale Drive is what the proposed update would, would include.
Why would we, why would we recommend extending it to the middle of the next lot? Is that what you just said?
Yeah, so it's just kind of, that, it's all owned by one person. It's just kind of like, you know how it's how some like roads just kind of get cut into a lot, and that lot never really corrects itself, it's still one property owner. That's why, it just kind of dead ends in the middle of it. It's not like there's a subdivision or anything down there.
So, currently, let me ask this question. So, currently, that is a county road maintained by the county?
Correct.
Okay, because this is not the only annexation up here tonight on Hillendale, correct?
Correct.
So, what does the traffic people, the engineering department, think about when we would be required to take over this maintenance of this road from the county?
Which is unpaved, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah. It's currently unpaved.
That's really, that don't come down to our decision. That's the county that really has the authority to, once we own so much of the right-of-way down, they give it, you know, to us.
Okay, I guess then, let me ask it this way. Let me ask that question this way. How much more do we have to take in for them to say, you own most of it?
So, we currently already own more than half of, not own, but there's more property in the city limits than outside of the city limits. So, we'll have that discussion with the county. It's part of our inter-local agreement that determines how, you know, the two jurisdictions sort of handle management for various things, as well as road maintenance. So, we haven't had that discussion yet. The county hasn't, you know, come to us to ask for it yet. But, I think the one thing that should be clear is that the city wouldn't be under any obligation to pave the road. Just so the residents out there now or in the future kind of understand that, even if they're annexed in, and even if the city takes on the road, that we're not under an obligation to pave it. Just some napkin math on just paving it would be a little shy of half a million dollars. So, not really a cost benefit situation for the city from that standpoint.
Is that the same with the rest of city services, that they're not anticipated or expected?
Correct, yep.
You know, I'm having a hard time thinking about trying to approve this.
Yeah.
Because it's not inside the optimal boundary, one. But, I'm having a hard time, you know, denying this because it could be in the optimal boundary. And I think it's such a big decision, and there's five of them here that are kind of, this, this all kind of has come together all at once.
We're making decisions without the backup of the documentation needed.
And decisions by the City Council to, you know, be able to include these inside the optimal boundary. So, to me, the only thing I think it sounds reasonable is postponing, you know, to some date certain so that we can get past that decision.
And I would agree with, with Phil on that. Either postpone it or deny it.
Deny it, to me, seems unfair in a sense.
But, we don't know what the City Council is going to do and how they're going to feel.
Right.
Especially when they're presented with the maintenance of the road, and whether there's enough in the budget to do that in the future.
Well, unfair. The optimal boundary is on the books.
Right, as it stands currently, yeah.
And it's outside.
And it's outside.
And we've turned down people repeatedly who are outside that boundary.
Right.
Yeah, and so, I guess kind of one of the things that we kind of talked about earlier, annexation is actually one of the rare applications that doesn't have, they can't come back time limit on it. And so, similar to, so unlike other ones where like you were to deny conditional use permit, they can't come back for a year unless they have like substantial reason. Annexations don't work that way. I mean, we've had annexations come back before in short months' time. And I guess also, I mean, the, in our mind, like when the recommendation was for approval to the Planning Commission, it was that whether it was for y'all to kind of make a decision on it, and then, one way or the other, and then it would go to City Council who needed to make a decision on it either way, whether that be through a work session setting, or if that be in just kind of at the dais in the meeting where it's like, well, we would have liked to have a little more discussion around this or a presentation about it, but since it's here, we're going to make a decision on it. So, that's kind of, that was our thought process was just kind of recommending for approval. It was just that we'd get a decision at Planning Commission, then the, then the decision would go to council for them to make a final decision if they wanted to bring Hillendale in, if they didn't want to bring Hillendale in. Same with some of the other annexations on the agenda for later tonight.
Well, the recommended, I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't, I guess I don't see that our, let's say, we approve them all. I don't see that, I don't equate that to being presumptive of the City Council's decision. We're just making a recommendation. They still have the opportunity to say no to the optimal boundary. They can say no to the annexations. They can say whatever they would like. Our, I see our approval, if that's the way we decide to go, as support of the staff's direction to try to take this process and trying to serve our citizens who've been waiting. And they know this is potentially the ultimate.
I also would say, I went and looked at school district, and school district has basically decided, yes, we don't mind. Yeah, that we think that this is going to be part of the optimal boundary, and they've already pretty much accepted the presumption. And unlike you, I think if we are being presumptive, then the City Council has a right to overturn us, and will. And unlike you, I think if we are being presumptive, then the city council has the right to overturn this and will. But we do have some families that are waiting on the school district. And I'm, I'm sensitive to that need that they, they would like, and the school district has said, we're willing to accept them.
However, the families knew where the, where the city limits were unless they've lived there thirty years or so and they have. They know, the, the, we're supposed to do things in an orderly manner, I think, for a planning commission. And we've got a document before the city council that would give the planning commission then the clearance to do this kind of thing. But it hadn't been passed by the city council. So until it's passed, I don't think it's any, any need to act on this.
And it's not presumption, I don't think, because it, we have a rule, I guess, if you want us to put it that way. And the rule's in place, let's follow the rules. And the rules say, don't annex outside of the optimal boundary right now.
Great discussion, commissioners. Would you care to make a motion?
I move to postpone to a date certain on this.
Second.
What date certain would that be?
Uh, let's pick the, what's July?
When is this going to be presented to the city camps?
Yeah, do we know?
Don't know.
No, 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 we, we don't know yet. So, 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 yeah, so we're working on, um, internally, like I said, other work sessions and we still haven't, we have, we don't have a schedule for the.
Two months, September meeting?
If there's no timeline, I would like to request that the motion in the second be amended to date certain of at least one month at a time for these families essentially, instead of pushing them out to four months.
So I, I amend my motion to say, uh, postpone until a date certain, the next, uh, August planning commission meeting.
All right.
Second. What, what date is that?
August eighth.
August the eighth.
It's eight.
Okay.
Could somebody restate that, please?
We are voting on an amended motion to date certain of August eighth.
Postpone.
For a postponement. We must vote on that date certain first. I have a motion and a second on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, sorry, I didn't wait for you to ask. My apologies. Maybe a roll call, please.
Robin Bridges?
No.
Dana Camp?
Yes.
Bill Chancellor?
Yes.
David Wisdom?
No.
Warren McCourt?
Yes.
Nonnet Reese?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Bob Wrightenbaugh?
Yes.
Joseph A. Strupp?
No.
Okay, we must, um, vote on the motion that was to postpone, but there was no date certain given. So I have a motion.
Is that what's amended?
It was.
Yeah, but I had a second on it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I said postpone, but I didn't give it a date certain.
Right. So right now, we just need to vote to just.
Let's just do it.
Postpone.
To postpone.
And we have a second on it.
And we have a second.
Is that table or are we just tabling it?
Nope.
No, so we just need to vote to clear this out, okay.
What's the motion?
I have a motion and a second to postpone, to postpone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
No.
It's the same.
Robin Bridges?
No.
Dana Camp?
Yes.
Bill Chancellor?
Yes.
David Wisdom? Warren McCourt?
Yes.
Nonnet Reese?
Yes.
Bob Wrightenbaugh?
Yes.
Joseph A. Strupp?
No.
Five to three.
Okay, second one.
Hi, everyone. Uh, this is a request for annexation of approximately five point two acres into the city limits. The location is eight one two Winter Hog Drive. The subject property is comprised of one parcel and is approximately five point two one acres in size. Majority of the property has dense vegetation with a frontage along Winter Hog Drive. There is a single family detached dwelling on site along with a detached accessory use structure. The property is contiguous to the city of oven boundary to the west and is a conforming lot of record as the minimum lot area required is three acres for rural zoning. The subject property is currently outside the optimal boundary as shown in the comprehensive plan twenty thirty. However, there is a proposed update to the comprehensive plan shared with the planning commission that extends the optimal boundary to include all lots along Winter Hog Drive until the Lee Road twenty seven intersection. The staff recommends forwarding, uh, to the city council with a recommendation for approval based upon the planning department's recommendation for the property to be included within the optimal boundary as part of upcoming amendments to the future land use plan.
Any questions? Thank you.
And so I guess kind of, um, there, there's an, the next item on the agenda is, um, dependent upon this one. And so the, so this, so item after this one can't annex if this one does not annex because it's, it's, it's only contiguous by this lot.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff on this?
For the same argument, I would move to postpone to a date certain, August the eighth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Robin Bridges?
No.
Dana Camp?
Yes.
Bill Chancellor?
Yes.
David Wisdom?
No.
Warren McCourt?
Yes.
Nonnet Reese?
Yes.
Bob Wrightenbaugh?
Yes.
Joseph A. Strupp?
No.
Five to three.
Thank you. Since this one does not meet currently.
Yeah, same thing, so you still need to make a decision on it, you still need a rule on it.
Okay, then I'll make a motion for the same arguments.
Wait, 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 wait. You should go ahead and present, Connor.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead and let Connor present.
This is good, this is good. Time to shine.
This is a annexation request of approximately three acres along two sixty one Lee Road, four fifteen, also known as Winter Hog Drive. Uh, it is immediately east of the case you just heard, um, cemetery annexation. And is contingent on, our recommendation for approval is contingent on the approval, uh, the annexation to the west by city council. Uh, again, it is currently outside of the optimal boundary. However, there are, uh, proposed updates to the future land use to include it. And staff is recommending forward to city council for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I think so.
I'll move, I'll, I'll make the same motion based on the same arguments of postponement until a date certain, August eighth.
Second.
Um, a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
I got that. Okay.
Okay, this next annexation is for, or request is for annexation of approximately four point four or five acres on Lee Road twenty five, also known as Hillendale Drive. The proxy map shows the location of the property in regards to the city limits. It touches the city limits on the northern boundary of the lot, um, at Hillendale Drive. This map shows the subject property's location in regards to the optimal boundary. The stem of the lot actually is within the optimal boundary, but the actual main portion of the lot is outside of the optimal boundary. Um, the um, rural property here is the Green Key property, which is outside of the optimal boundary, but was annexed by the city council, um, I believe in December of twenty twenty three.
In April.
April of twenty twenty three, thank you. Um, and at that time, it was obviously outside of the optimal boundary. The subdivision plat for the property, um, just shows its configuration. It is, um, four point four or five acres. It is a conforming lot of record. Um, the frontage at Hillendale Drive is thirty feet, which, um, is enough for it to be considered a flag lot. And we do recommend approval.
Wait. Is enough for it to not be considered a flag lot?
It is considered a flag lot.
Okay, 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 all right.
Does, we have an update on flag lots?
Yes.
That's coming up as well?
Yes.
In this update, does it meet those requirements?
It would, yes, we are, um, upping our requirement from twenty five to thirty feet to match the county's requirement.
Yeah, and so just, um, as a continuation, um, of the questions that were asked at the packing lunch, just kind of if nonconforming lots or lot sizes were a justification for denial of an annexation, uh, legal council says they are not since we have, uh, annexation policy that is silent on the shape of lots or conformity of lots being a reason for denial and that if it's not, um, in opposition to the public health, safety and welfare, then a lot shape cannot be the reason for denial of an annexation.
Commissioners, this is not for our public hearing.
A little quick discussion of that, real quick. Now, we've often told that, that we're not obligated to annex a recommendation for annexing property. We're not obligated.
Mm-hmm.
So if we have that discretion, I, I, I mean, I'm not going to argue with the council, but, but somehow that seems in conflict with what we've just been told.
No, I think if the, I feel like someone turned my mic up, sorry about it. Uh, so if, let's say like the primary reason for this one was just like, no, I, I don't have any issue. Like if the discussion was around, oh, I don't have any issue with this one being outside of the optimal boundary or anything. I particularly have issues with the shape of the lot, then that would necessarily make us liable and that wouldn't be a defensible reason for that one to not be annexed.
Okay.
Or anyone in the future.
And it would not be nonconforming if annexed to our.
No.
Nonconforming to our, our subregs.
No, there's an, no, there's a lot of record, a legal lot of record.
But we have precedent for bringing this type of property in. Cause we did, and we saw it in the previous map where we have a, a property that is adjacent to the optimal boundary or partial, actually it was just partially included in the optional, optimal boundary. And we have the precedent right here also, an R, that's right across the street that is also part of, that is also not in the optimal boundary right now, but has already been included by the city and by the city council. I see no reason to delay this one.
I'll move to approve Ax twenty twenty four zero one eight.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. No.
Roll call, please.
Robin Bridges?
Yes.
Dana Camp?
No.
Bill Chancellor?
No.
David Wisdom?
Yes.
Warren McCourt?
No.
Nonnet Reese?
No.
Bob Wrightenbaugh?
No.
Joseph A. Strupp?
Yes.
Thank you. And the next.
All right. Schuman annexation. So the request is for a recommendation to the city council for annexation of approximately three point eight nine acres. Uh, general location, four zero nine nine Lee Road, one forty six, also known as Moores Mill Drive, past the state drive. Moores Mill Road, yeah, there we go, always mix that up. Uh, so the reason that this one was included, even though this one is not accompanied by a rezoning, is that currently the city does not maintain, uh, Moores Mill Road from a state drive to Society Hill, from a state drive to, uh, Society Hill Road. Um, and this kind of one of the things that staff's feeling was that its location, and I think the implication of annexing property that is on roads that are not currently maintained by the city warrant their own discussion, not necessarily, uh, like, it didn't, it didn't amount to recommending them out, as you see, I mean, the recommendation is for approval, but just that these items need their own, need their own item, these agenda items need their own item. That way they can have their, that way there can be a discussion around what the implications of the annexation are. And I think that, that might be a change that, that we look at making going forward to the annexation policy. Just that way there is more thought, uh, and more deliberation around not just annex, not just annexing, but also at what pace are we annexing, uh, at what pace are we annexing? And then what are the implications of those annexations? And so that is why this one is included off of the consent agenda. And so from, uh, is it contiguous to the city? It is, uh, this is an odd spot, it kind of, there are several places in the city where you get kind of on the, on the periphery of it where it looks, you get this kind of sawtooth in the city, out of the city. Majority of things are kind of outside, but you got things that are further past it that are in the city. So it gets kind of odd, but, and this is kind of one of those places, but it is contiguous to the north and to the west of the property. And like I said, the only thing is that it's on a stretch of road that is currently not maintained by the city that could eventually tip a threshold that the county would then come to the city and through the interlocal agreement and request that the city now maintain the road. So then with that, I'll turn that over to you all for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners? This is the last one.
What is the city's position on maintaining this road?
I think it's recognized as, it's just kind of, uh, an inevitability. I mean, so what's, um, right across at, at the northeast corner of this, that's going to be a future park site. And so, I mean, there's, like I said, it's presumptive that, that the city is eventually going to maintain all of Moores Mill Road out into, uh, the edges of the city limits, which extends just a ways past this intersection.
So you would characterize this one as different than the others?
Correct, and so this one's already inside the optimal boundary. Um, this one, this one's well inside of it. Uh, like I said, the only thing with this one is just that going forward, there's probably going to be more discussion and consideration around, I, around annexations that exist on roads that are currently not maintained by the city. Just because, um, I, I think we kind of, kind of mentioned in the last, last meeting, just since I've been here, I mean, we've had multiple projects that happened on Sandhill Road and Sandhill Road is another one that eventually, um, as the annexations happen, that's going to be another one that comes into the city and that there's going to need to be consideration around it. So there's just going to be a lot more discussion, just kind of looking at, well, this meets and this meets, well, it's, do we need to have a little more nuanced discussion and nuanced standards around annexation in some areas? And like what it's going to do to road maintenance and the resources of the city? Just, like I said, the recommendation is still for approval.
Just if I could add, just real quickly, um, this came up with a discussion, um, at city council meeting, uh, meeting or two ago, um, where we were annexing some property and some questions came about, you know, as far as who's going to maintain the road. Well, it actually came up when the, um, the county was, um, gifting us some of those, those roads. So the question was, you know, who was going to maintain and who was going to bring them up to city standards? We were accepting them and obviously we'll have to maintain them from this point. Um, that has struck the core of, um, from staff position to allow the policymakers to be aware that this is the case. I will say that, um, for developments as they come in, um, we generally work a development agreement out with them or some form of fashion to where they perform improvements to the streets, um, ahead of us, you know, being able to take those on. So these, um, one offs where you have a lot here and there coming in began to, um, affect, you know, our, you know, future stock of, of streets to maintain. Um, you know, that's, that's become very important as, as our resurfacing budget has grown from, uh, a million, million and a half dollars to five million dollars a year for the next, um, six years as we're forecasting. So, you know, those things are real and, uh, you know, we want to make sure that the policymakers are aware of those. And so that will probably, as, as justice has said, come up in a staff report so that y'all are aware of that.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or motions?
I move to forward to city council the recommendation of approval, the Schuman annexation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Hi. I can see you guys now.
I can see you too.
Okay, this item is a request for preliminary plat approval for a thirty lot performance residential development that includes twenty six townhouses, one lot for a private street, one lot that is open space and two commercial lots. The property is located at, uh, the intersection of the entrance into. The property is located at the intersection of the entrance into Auburn Flats, which used to be West Shore Landing, and East University Drive. The property is Zoned CDD, and is just west of the vintage. Back in November of last year, a conditional use for a bank, multiple unit development, and a commercial building were approved. The applicant has since requested that the multiple unit development portion of the project be converted into townhouses, and in addition to the plat request, they are requesting to subdivide off of a private street. All of the lots have frontage from the existing, the existing private drive here, so both commercial lots will access here, and then the townhouses, although they will have, this right here will be a private street, access to that private street will be here. We do recommend approval of the waiver as well as the plat, and I did receive a couple of correspondence, one from an adjacent property owner regarding cross-access from the property here to his adjacent property. There is, or are wetlands and a stream along the front of the property that make it difficult to pass through and cross the property to provide access. The wetland delineation, I believe, was presented with the DRT when it went forward to, with DRT for the multiple unit development that showed the wetlands, and cross-access was not required. So, that is the only correspondence that I received. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, so there'll be cross-access for both commercial parcels on the, that front, East University, and no curb cuts, if you will?
Correct.
East University?
Right.
So I also recall some discussion about having a traffic light.
Yes. That intersection will be signaledized in the next few months, I believe.
Even, I mean, even without this building out, that's?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Excuse me, this project actually kicks the warrant for that signal.
Oh, no.
Yes.
Never mind.
All right, so us approving it says the signal goes.
Based on the, like, the information that I was aware of, yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This does require a public hearing. At this time, I'd like to invite you forward, if you'd like to speak on this agenda item. Please, please don't forget to sign in.
I will do. Can I do that on the way out?
Yes.
So my wife presented, her name's Mary Ann Stiles, we're the adjoining lot property owners at two-two-two-oh, and we had requested a cross-access when the conditional use-
To the east?
To, to the west, from our property, so.
What's your, I just wanted to know-
It's right there.
Your name and address, sir.
Sorry?
Your name and address.
Craig Wahlberg, I'm her spouse, and sixteen fifty-five Creekwood Trail, Auburn, Alabama. So what I'm noticing is two glaring differences between the preliminary plat and what was provided to you for data to make your recommendations off of for conditional use. What I would suggest is if you were to look at the conditional use wetlands, it looked to be a hundred-foot lake all the way to the front of the property. We submitted a document to you that showed what we felt reflected and accurate wetlands delineation, which has no wetlands all the way to the front, per se, this is based off surveys. The preliminary plat actually matches what we presented now, exactly, almost, so I'm looking back in time, you made a decision based off of a hundred-foot wide lake to deny access, potentially deny access to us, and yet with the preliminary plat, it's been completely revised, the wetlands, so that's one consideration. The other consideration I have, hopefully you'll adjust, is it looks to me that the original plat was never entered into the conditional use, the one that actually created the majority of the parcels being used. In that plat, it actually states there is a west adjacent lot access for utility ingress and egress, it's on the formal plat, it went to the probate today, and that's also stated that it was always intended to have access for lot one and two to the west, and that did not show up in the conditional use. So those two things are now in the preliminary plat, they're showing this document now, and it was not in your conditional use document, that's my awareness. So on that, there's some legal precedence that says there's access to the west, as well as the wetlands, has been significantly reduced to where there are no wetlands all the way to the front of the property, the front of the property is effectively, what we provided was, there was a very tip of the wetlands, and to me, the road couldn't be adjusted to where we're not on the wetlands. So it seems to me a glaring difference between what was conditional use, and now it's showing up in the preliminary plat, and I guess our request would be, could you consider the cross-access as it's stated legally in the preliminary, or in the subdivision document? And then also, the severely adjusted wetlands now corresponds to what we submitted to you, and it actually shows very little, if any, there, and when we talked to our engineering firm, and we had our wetland survey, they said this passage here would be minimal, if any, and would be standard and routine, so that was some of the expectation. So it seems to me that you were operating off data that was inaccurate or omitted, and yet it's now showing up in the preliminary plat. So, anyway, what we're suggesting is, we'd like to re-request the access somewhat as shown, possibly closer to the front, and see this residential lot that you're being asked for specifically comes across over down to the area.
Can you, can you bring me that? Like, when, like, when you're done presenting, I'll, I'll take it from you, I don't want to cut off your final, like, ninety seconds.
No, that's fine, we're done. I just want to state there was some glaring inconsistencies between the CU, the data was admitted, or was overstated. This is what we submitted, my wife submitted during the hearing. Here's the legal document, the probate states that there is an easement expected to the west there, that was provided, here's where it now shows up in the preliminary plat, it was not in the CU, and there was the overstated wetlands, and here's revised wetlands here, very little, if none, so it's, and when the decision was made, they said, well, there's wetlands there, we can't do anything for you, turns out there's, there's little to none in that area. Even when you look on Google Maps, when you provide your lots here, it actually shows there are no wetlands there, yet the original CU showed it all the way to the front, as if it were a lake. So it wasn't in our benefit, what was proposed during the CU, where it looks like in the preliminary plat, it's much more accurate. So anyway, just want to state that.
All right.
Hopefully you consider that, thank you.
And so, so your request is on your past conditional use approval, that like you'd want the road reconsidered?
We'd just like to use accurate data, so when you're making your decisions, you actually have proper data to utilize, and when you see a lake that's hundred-foot wide wetlands, I understand why you would reject and say, hey, this doesn't make sense to cross it. When you look at the preliminary plat provided by you today that you're asking for approval, that's not the same data we used during the CU, and it actually shows there is land, not water, in that area. So I'm trying to understand, here we are, preliminary plat, using data that didn't exist during conditional use, but should have, with decisions made during the CU. So if you're accepting this preliminary plat, you're also accepting that things have changed significantly, that were not presented during the CU. Does that make sense? I don't know if that has impact.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, right, but like, so I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to get, like, what is your firm request?
Yeah, we'd like to have west access, just as we provided.
Okay, okay, all right, yeah.
So here's, here's what we proposed, and when I adjusted, just based off of what I'm looking at.
Cross-access here.
The cross-access would actually not even be on the wetlands.
Excuse me, sir, sorry. Sorry, need to speak to them and end the mic.
Yeah, sorry. Any questions, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so who would build the road that you're talking about?
Well, it depends, if you look at, they're asking for a subdivision, a rework of the original parcels, so if I understand the current regulations that were stated in the video when I looked at, when my wife presented, they said that's typically stubbed all the way to the adjacent lot by the developer, the property that's in question, that's my understanding. Our property was done in eighty-five, eighty-six, and that's why I don't think we're, we have that same standard. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Any questions, anyone else? Thanks, appreciate your time.
The public hearing is still open, do you want to talk in the public hearing, or do you want to wait till all the questions? Public hearing is still open, if anyone else would like to speak on this agenda item. I'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Applicant.
Thank you. Blake Rice, Barrett Simpson Engineering. I would like to respond to some of what Mr. Wahlberg just brought to your attention. The number of items, as far as the conditional use, the original conditional use was based off of city data, as far as where wetlands go, as far as, as long-
And you're referring to his conditional use previously?
Yes. As well as the national wetlands inventory, a subsequent wetlands delineation done by the developer did show that a little less wetlands were there, but the stream is still there. It was discussed with city staff during DRT. This item was acted on by this commission during the conditional use, the same argument was there regarding the cross-access, it was then again acted on by city council at both times, I believe city staff said, stated there was no need for cross-access as that lot to the east would have the opportunity to have its own curb cut out onto East University Drive. With that being said, there was no reason to have a cross-access crossing what, yes, is a little bit of a smaller wetland than was originally shown, once good data was received, but is still a stream with required buffer yards in there, also adjacent to the floodplain. It's also worth noting that during those conversations, that it was shown that this property also has access to the east through the existing Brewster's parking lot, through a platted access easement. So that is how the conditional use information was, was presented to this commission and subsequently to city council. As far as the original plat, we have researched this, there was an original plat in nineteen eighty-five that created a lot to the west, which was a, is currently the private drive that feeds the apartments to the rear. Then a larger lot passed it, and the, Mr. Wahlberg's property was a year later subdivided out of that larger lot. In that original nineteen eighty-five plat, the, the development subject parcel was given access towards the private drive, ultimately on what was left for a future right-of-way, which was never constructed, ultimately, a apartment facility was built to the rear, and we have had to work, this property has been before this commission on a number of occasions, and it came, it, all the reasons that it's never developed before were because the access to that private drive could not be granted. We have, as, as a group, this development group has worked with the owners of that private drive and have gotten access, but there is no legal right for any properties to the east to access that private drive. The, I, the, I don't want to say anything out of hand, but what Mr. Wahlberg is saying about the legal end of that original plat is incorrect. That is where it stands today, this is, this has been acted on, this project has gone through DRT. Mr. Chancellor, to your answer, yes, the, the signalization of this intersection is part of the development agreement for this project. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the waiver, do you want us to do that separate?
Yeah, so, yeah, so you'll need to approve the waiver before you approve the preliminary plat, because this is still, they're still requesting to subdivide off of a private drive, which is the acre parking lot in the middle, so.
How is that coming along with the, another?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so, so, so subdivision, so the subdivision amendments, we're making the final staff internal amendments, where we send it to legal to get their opinions, and then that will be on the, let's say, subsequent September agenda, like I said, for, for approval, so, so, yeah, so we'll go over that in one of the following pack of lunch meetings, just kind of where we're at, just as a general update, of just kind of like what the, what we think the substance of it will be, and then barring any like major deviations or changes from legal, that's what it'll look like, so.
Okay. Commissioners, questions, comments, motion?
So are we in a situation similar to annexation, where we have some, some changes that are coming, or are these changes for the private drive, or is this?
Yeah, so, yeah, so, there's always been the mechanism to request a waiver for a private drive, I think the only thing that we were changing in the subdivision regs were, it was still always, it's still going to be a waiver, there's just going to be situations where we support it, and situations where we don't, and so this would be a situation where we would support it, this is not acting as a road, this is essentially just a contained parking lot.
Right.
Just kind of within a development that they're requesting to subdivide off of, and so the only real, I guess, extra level to this one is that they are requesting to subdivide off of a private street that is taking access off of a private street, but like you said, they have the agreement now with the property owner to have access off of the private street, and so now they just need to subdivide off of what is, what is essentially a parking lot.
Is that agreement in perpetuity?
And it's a lot of record, which is one of the other changes that we did.
Yes.
Is that agreement you're talking about in perpetuity, or is it handled?
I guess that, that'd be a question for the applicant, I can't speak to, um-
It is. It is, perpetuity.
Commissioners? I will move to approve PP twenty twenty-four zero two four, the waiver first.
Second.
Okay, so first we are approving, or I mean, yes, motion to approve the waiver to subdivide off of a private drive. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Waiver motion carries, and now we still need to do the preliminary, preliminary plat. To approve PP twenty twenty-four zero two four, the preliminary plat.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. One, one second, Biltmore was supposed to be next, and it has been removed.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so, so, I'm sorry, so, the applicant, Biltmore, requested that the item be, be pulled off the agenda, they don't want a decision or anything, they just wanted to be pulled off the agenda. And so, I, I guess, just kind of with the, with the timing, everything, we didn't, didn't update it, I guess, on the paper agendas, but.
That's okay. Okay, sorry, it was, it was my pad.
All right, the next case before you is a request for revised preliminary plat approval for a twenty-six lot conventional subdivision, Eagle Creek Estates on Shell Tumor Parkway, just east of the West Pace PTV. The property is about thirty-six and a half acres, it is Zoned Large Lot Residential District, which was rezoned in December of twenty twenty-two from rural. Uh-oh. The plat is missing. Um, so, the original preliminary plat that was approved in November of twenty twenty-two expired in May of twenty twenty-four, and the applicant is requesting a new preliminary plat approval for that subdivision. The plat remained basically the same, there were some minor lot line revisions, as well as the addition of a common area for the mail kiosk. The applicant has received approval for their development plans, as well as approval they're waiting for from the Natural Resources Conservation Service, and staff recommends approval of the new preliminary plat.
Any staff comments of record?
No, there are a few comments, but nothing that would really hold anything up.
I guess it's kind of for the, for the information for, for everybody in the room, so if you haven't attended a planning commission meeting before, or just kind of aren't familiar with the process, so planning commissioners do have a packet, it's not like they're just going to approve this, just kind of based on our word, they do get a packet in the mail that have, that has staff reports, the preliminary plats, all the information that we do display on the screens, and then even extra information, including that, and so they have that with them physically, and we also have a meeting on Mondays where we go over the packet in great detail, where they're able to ask any questions, where they're presented the plat, and so I don't want anybody to think that, you know, we got to this item, they weren't presented with any information, and they still approved it, and so they have been briefed on this, they are aware of it, they have it sitting with them, even though it's not- them, even though it's not digitally up on the screen. I just wanted to say that for a moment of clarity.
I'll leave my copies up here for anyone who comes to speak.
Thank you. This does require a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing now if you'd like to speak on this agenda item regarding Eagle Creek Estates. Seeing no, oh, okay. Yes, ma'am.
Lori McCormick. I'm a live across the street in Men's Trail.
Your address, please.
Um, 355 Barksdale Lane, Auburn. Um, I'm not really sure how many other people I speak for, but there are several that were in the Facebook group and I know that's been approved years and years ago to change this beautiful piece of property into a multi-use, many, many acre lots, whatever. But there's a lot of people that are really concerned now after seeing it clear-cut and logged and no erosion cloth was put up till today after they've logged that whole section and just really interested to know how, as a concerned citizen, seeing all of this property destroyed right above a natural creek and a wetland and a creek that runs into a reservoir for the city and Outing Club Lake, who do we contact when we see things that may be concerning us with all the erosion and the runoff and these proposed lots that are going to run into a perennial stream? There's lots of wetlands in there. You may not have a plat, but every one of the lots on the west side all have a stream or a wetland or an upland zone or something. So we're all just very concerned about what's what's in place and who can we contact to talk about this lot coming in? That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Co- yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say I'll I'll answer it after all the all the public hearings done.
Great. Public hearing is still open if you'd like to come forward? Good evening.
James Stone, I have lived across the street for 45 years from this development.
And your address is?
I spoke to you originally and on that particular evening when the original preliminary was presented, almost all of us were primarily concerned about a new roadway connecting to Shell Tumor Parkway. We had hoped that the outlet would be on one of the adjoining streets that's already in existence. However, it was approved to come on to Shell Tumor. Now, I went to your 2030 comp plan and right there it is. It plainly states surveys of Auburn residents. And remember, you guys are volunteering to serve me, not the professionals. The survey showed Auburn citizens are primarily, number one, not concerned about parks, all of the feel-good stuff. They're primarily concerned about traffic. The comp plan shows that Auburn is terribly deficient with its east-west traffic flow. And through the combination of Ogletree coming down of Wrightsmill Road, all of that traffic funnels as the primary west corridor now, Little Shell Tumor, which is a state highway, folks. And because of the lack of city planning and anticipation, you have taken a city highway that's about this narrow, no shoulders, and you've commandeered it into the primary east-west corridor. And your comp plan shows a proposal that you should consider extending Wrightsmill Road down to Sand Hill. It's right there in your materials. It also shows that Veterans Parkway can be easily, a few hundred yards, extended to Southview. Southview, of course, connects to University, which would bring much of this traffic just exiting next to the Ford dealership right there before on the hot on South College, right before the interstate bridge. Either one or both of those would make an immense difference with Shell Tumor and give us some relief. All of the construction equipment in Auburn, Alabama, those locations for their companies are out down near Sand Hill. They have to come up Shell Tumor and all day long we have construction vehicles, we have bicycle folks holding all of this up. It's a mess. Now, you guys are supposed to be planning, you're supposed to be reading the plans that have been done and they're excellent. However, they mean nothing until somebody sets some priorities. Warren, I'm talking to you. Bob, I'm talking to you. I've been talking to these guys for 30-some odd years. Come on, help our council members have some priorities and give us some east-west alternatives. Thank you again for volunteering. End of sermon.
Thank you.
Can we get your address?
Yes, can we get your address, sir? Sir? May we get your address, please?
500 Shell Tumor Parkway.
Thank you and please sign in. Will you sign in as well, ma'am? Thank you. And the public hearing is still open if anyone would like to come forward and still speak on this item. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing.
All right, so so to address the first question, just kind of around the preliminary plat and then there was clear cutting of the site and then just kind of what was going out, what was going to happen with the delineation of the wetlands, stream buffers, et cetera. So Eagle Creek Estates, for those of you who may not be aware, Eagle Creek Estates had been approved, I want to say it's 2022, it was a while ago, but this preliminary plat expired, already went all the way through DRT and had approved DRT plans and they had a pre-con scheduled when they noticed that it had expired. So I just kind of back on, I guess, the theme of the meeting. One of the things that we identified that we want to change in the subdivision regs is that if somebody has DRT plans, approved DRT plans, but essentially that it extends their preliminary plat from the initial 18-month time period that they have, it gives them another 18 months. That would have 36 months to start and complete construction and make it through the final plat process without having to come back to the planning commission and get another preliminary plat approval. And so since they already had DRT plans, they gave me a call and they asked, well, kind of, we already have have DRT plans. Where are we at? Like, we have a pre-con, can we go ahead and go forward with this pre-con? And so it was one of the things that we talked about internally. So I checked with engineering, talked with Worm, our watershed management folks, and they kind of put in the standards required, just kind of the things that they wanted to see that they feel comfortable moving forward with the pre-con meeting and then that they would then reapply for the preliminary plat that they already had approved DRT plans for. And so that is what this is. So this is the request of another preliminary plat, even though, like I said, they already have approved DRT plans. And for everybody in the audience, when you apply for the preliminary plat, you see what's on the paper, then you take that to DRT as the development review team. And so then that's where a lot of the granular details are kind of knocked out. So you have the big conceptual things like uses, number of lots, et cetera, and then the granular details, kind of like the setbacks, utilities, storm, storm, stormwater, all of those granular details, like she mentioned, just kind of the waterways on the west side, those things are accounted for, those things are rigorously studied and sometimes projects don't make it through DRT before they make it to final plat. It is a very extensive process. And then once you have approved DRT plans, you come back for a final plat. So you can't get a final plat unless you have DRT plans. So it's a, as I said, a pretty methodical process that we force people to follow. And so since they already had approved DRT plans, we felt that it was internally, like I said, that all the bases had been addressed and that we put in the proper parameters for them to move forward with the pre-con meeting and then that they were going to reapply for the preliminary plat to extend their construction period. So I guess if you have any questions, I ask particularly about the watershed or anything, Worm is here, like a representative here to answer any questions, just kind of around that.
Water resources, where if they see something that they, you know, that needs to be addressed, okay?
Yeah. Did you, did you have anything to add on the?
Nothing really to add, other than we'll make sure that, I'm sure our staff is well aware, obviously, of the project and they do routine inspections. We'll make sure that if they haven't already, that we're on top of any any issues on the site.
And and can you tell the public, especially Ms. McCormick, who question whom are they to call?
Yes, ma'am. It's it's our watershed division manager is Ms. Marla Smith, but you can call anyone in water resource management and we'll make sure that those concerns are addressed. The number is 334-501-3060.
Thank you. Good, thank you. And now, public hearing is closed and we'll have commissioners comment.
All right, let me give a little bit background here. The, at the time, this was, this has been one of our most discussed areas in South Auburn for a long, over a long period of time. When the West Pace Development Cooperative District was created, and that's the part that's in the pink, this, yeah, PDD, but it's also a cooperative district, which is under Alabama law, allows, oh, the owner of the property, the developer of the property to have certain incentives, which he would then collect from those who reside in that and they provide the utilities, they pay off the bond with the utilities with the money that he receives from the tenants that rent there and they all are by there. And this area was very much under discussion at that time and the people who live in Whipperwill and the people who live off of Shell Tumor were very concerned about that commercial development, which got caught, by the way. This is a a multi-use commercial development that has not reached its full potential because it got caught in the commercial retail downturn in, I think, 2008, 2008. And therefore it has not built out, but that will be a rather intensive commercial area. And that's what it's, you know, it's got set up under the cooperative district laws and no state anything. This property was zoned LDD as an intention of buffering the people who were concerned who live on Shell Tumor and in Whipperwill, buffer them from the commercial district. And so that's what this proposal is doing, is bringing in houses under the LDD criteria, which meets the zone, it meets the zone as well as the as the subdivision regulations. I personally think it will be, that should provide some certainty to the people who have been concerned about that property. Yes, it is, it is a natural resource property, it's very nice environment there, but it is commercial property, it's close to the interstate highway. Shell Tumor has been a an issue because it is a, some unique, it came under the State Department of Conservation and Natural Resources because it is part of our, a Channel 2 Chihuahua State Park. So anyway, I I think that this is a pretty good compromise on how that property can buffer the rule in the NC 2054 and the people across the street.
I'm sorry, no, I mean to interrupt.
Well, you are, please, please, ma'am.
No, you are, you are.
I'm unfinished, okay.
No, no, public hearing is closed. So anyway, I I stand by what I say, in fact, that this was, LDD was created for the buffer to there and deemed appropriate and there was a lot of discussion. I thought it was a compromise fair enough and everybody seemed to be satisfied that that would work. Now, it's now, it's always when the bulldozers come that plans catch people's attention. But there's a lot of discussion at the time.
Commissioners, motions, comments?
Do you approve PP 2024-026 with staff comments?
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, up next is a rezoning at 900 Anna Brook Drive. It is a request to rezone approximately 0.89 acres from Neighborhood Conservation, it's NC 20, to development district housing. Oh, there's the plat.
There it was.
There it is. So the-
Thank you for keeping us on.
The subject property is part of a larger three-acre parcel. It was rezoned, this shows, a large rezoning that occurred in 1988, 159 acres, and it rezoned about 25 acres here from rural to NC 20 and about 134 acres here from rural to DDH. This is the Sugar Creek Estates subdivision and these are Moores Mill First and Second, or, excuse me, Moores Mill and Moores Mill First. This just shows the plat of the subject property where it was consolidated to create the three-acre parcel. The DDH zone allows a density of 5.5 dwelling units an acre and the applicant has requested a conditional use for a multiple unit development, which would be eight units with a density of two and a half, 2.59 dwelling units an acre. The future land use for the property is neighborhood preservation, which calls to maintain existing densities in the area. The 2.59 is in line with Park Lane subdivision over here, which has a density of 2.6. Sugar Creek Estates and the Moores Mill phases here have a density of just over about one dwelling unit an acre. Staff recommends approval and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This does require a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing now if you have anything you'd like to say on the rezoning.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is John Register and I live at the, what I call the old or the original Moores Mill neighborhood.
And your address is?
1669 Lauren Lane in Auburn. And this, our neighborhood adjoins the Sugar Creek neighborhood and I can't say that I have any kind of opposition to the development itself. We've studied it and it looks like it's going to enhance the value of the area. I do want to express my concern about the, the, really the infrastructure in the area and the kind of the overloaded situation that we're dealing with. Within the last year to 18 months, we've had Auburn Community Church that has been built across the road. Any of you who live in the area are probably familiar with the traffic. Some of you might be here about this tonight. So that has been very painful. We have a entrance into Sugar Creek as an option to get into that neighborhood and into Moores Mill. We also have an entrance off of Moores Mill Road into the Moores Mill neighborhood. I can tell you that it is often a game of chicken. You feel as if you're playing chicken trying to get in and out of the neighborhood and it's quite dangerous. I've seen school buses narrowly avoid accidents. So I guess I'm here to really highlight this, probably most of you may be familiar with it. For all I know, you've already may have done an environmental impact study on it, but I'm here to plead our case. I speak for myself, I can't say I'm representing anyone specifically, but I do know that many of my neighbors feel the same way. And I I'd like to know if you guys have already planned, if you're already planning to possibly put in a roundabout or a traffic light in one or both of those entrances in the near future? Or if you're not, if you would consider that? I feel that it's essential. I feel that the situation is honestly unsafe and I'm concerned with my family going in and out of the neighborhood, school buses, trying to navigate that area. So again, I think the development itself is going to be good for the area, but the church, Auburn Community Church, has a large membership. It puts us, it's overtaxing the infrastructure. There's a lot of development that's exploded in that area in the last 10 to 15 years. There's a lot of development that's exploded in that area in the last ten to fifteen years, as you know. There's a school going into the church, and in the coming months will be more traffic. And then this additional eight houses will bring in eight families that will be more traffic. So again, I, I would love to know if you guys are planning any kind of infrastructure improvements that might address these issues, and thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who'd like to speak on the public hearing? Please, yes, ma'am. And sir, will you please sign in? Thank you.
My name is Joy Turner, and I live at seventeen ninety-four Covington Ridge, Unit fourteen oh one, which is in the back of the Sugar Creek subdivision on the interstate. And I come in and out, or my family comes in and out of those two entrances into Sugar Creek and have the same problems that he had, especially after the church. And the city, where there were two lanes coming into the neighborhood, they made them three. So there's two exiting, and if you, if there's two cars there, you can't see who's coming from that way, and they can't see what's coming from that way, so I don't know why they put that. And it's hard to get out onto Moores Mill Road because of the new turn that leads from Hamilton to the right onto Moores Mill Road. But my main objection is for where a residence was and burned down to the ground, now that's wanting to be rezoned, I mean, it's a neighborhood, why would anybody want to put these town homes or whatever is in the future in the neighborhood when you thought it was going to be a neighborhood with one resident per lot? And I know across the street is one house. On this flyer, it has DDH for across Lauren Lane, where there's a house there. I don't know about all these DDHs and all the three letters, so I don't know what the plans are, but I'm really against that being rezoned except for residences. Not, I'd like it to stay NC twenty rather than being rezoned DDH, whatever that will mean. You have any questions?
Thank you. Well, after the public hearing, we'll address all of the questions from everybody. Thank you. Public hearing is open, anyone else? Yes, sir?
Good evening. I'm Brian Abada, I live at eight eight six Anna Brook, right across the street from the house. I was there when unfortunately the house burned down, but we've worked really closely with the developer, and I'm not opposed to that. We were opposed to what they originally were bringing to us, but when working in good faith with the developer, we think that what they're going to bring to the neighborhood is, is acceptable. It's better than what we originally saw. So as one who has a very vested, literally vested interest in that neighborhood, I like what we have seen, that it's going to be similar to the Magnolia Club neighborhood, so it brings value to the neighborhood. So I guess just as someone who lives so close to that, I do appreciate what they have compromised with us and worked with us in that regard, so that's all I want to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Public hear, public hearing is still open, if there's anyone else who would like to Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing.
Good evening, Brett Bascom with the Forsyth Group, representing the applicant. You know, there's a couple comments at Packet that I'll just go ahead and answer. You know, that this was, you know, this is going to be essentially a site condo, it's going to look no different than Mag Club, Millwood, Overlook, and twenty-two fifty that are all right there on Moores Mill and all there. I mean, it's going to look and feel just like a single-family development with single detached homes. It's just, on this particular piece of property, it's three acres. The front piece, this one half-acre piece on the corner was NC twenty, the rest of it was DDH. So we have a split-zone piece of property, and as Warren, as Warren alluded during Packet and told us the history of NC zoning, the NC zoning is not something we zone too. It was a protective zoning back when they originally did the rezoning back in, when, I don't think I was around. So it was a while. There was a question about association, you know, this piece of property will be its own separate condo association that will maintain the shared drive that the properties will be taking access off of, but it will be a parcel within the Sugar Creek neighborhood HOA. So they, this will be part of that. So if you live in this, you'll be part of two associations, one, your property association inside, as well as overall. We did have an agreement, we can, I can send this, that the neighbors, the neighborhood voted and amended their covenants to accept what we were doing, and that was a vote of the, of the entire Sugar Creek neighborhood, and, and that was approved. So, so we have that. Other than that, you know, I, I would, I, I'd be reminiscent if I didn't say this. Access to that neighborhood, as you probably all know, is, is everybody wants to get out on Moores Mill and on Hamilton. But remember that there was a connection from Riverwood that would have connected in the back to Champions Boulevard, and the neighborhood fought that connection, and now there's not that connection there. But, you know, in regards to what the Planning Commission and city want, you know, you know what I mean? It's part of our, of our, of the city's stuff, of city's requirements or guidance documents to have cross, cross-access and connectivity. And it's one of the situations where staff and this board recommended approval for the connection, but it did get voted down by city council, you know what I mean? And so the same people, it happens in a lot of these situations, is early on, people were fighting the connectivity, and then we get into a situation, it's twenty years later, everything's developed, and the back way out would have been the best way to get out, and it's not there. So I just, you know, I want to remind people of that, that there is other ways, or there were supposed to be other ways to get out of this neighborhood, some of them were.
Woodley too, Woodley is also an exit.
What's that?
You can go Woodley Road, right? There's also an exit there to get out of the neighborhood.
Well, yeah, I mean, and you can connect over and go across from towns and that. I mean, there's multiple ways to get out, but there's, you know, you've got to be able to get through.
Those are the main two, though.
Yeah.
For sure.
So I guess I wanted to, um, address the comments in the public hearing. So the city is very aware of the traffic situation over on Moores Mill, Hamilton, and just kind of intersection of Ogletree, that is studied. There is, there was actually something that was proposed on this agenda that was also just kind of in relation to, to that, just kind of having to do with traffic. So the city is definitely aware of it, there are upgrades that are planned. I think just the, and, you know, the city engineers, they have, they're representatives here, but I think generally speaking, just the pace of development, just kind of on that side of town, has really kind of put the scrutiny on that intersection. There's really kind of a lot of conversation about when that, when is that going to, when are those upgrades going to happen, and also what are, what do those upgrades need to be to accommodate just the rapid pace of development that has happened? So I don't want you to leave this meeting feeling that like the city is ignoring that. Like I said, the city is very aware of that, studying that, and I was also kind of looking at when to and how to implement the best solution, so.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, we are voting on the rezoning.
I move to approve, RM twenty twenty-four zero zero six. Second.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Same location, different request.
All right. Yeah, so this for the conditional use on Sugar Creek, so the request is that a recommendation to city council for conditional use approval for performance residential development, multi, multi-unit development, just kind of Anna Brook, not nine hundred, nine hundred Anna Brook Drive, I shouldn't go to the next slide. So we kind of covered it, just kind of what the density would be. It'd be two point five nine dwelling units per acre. I said, so that's kind of in line just generally with the density in that area, and so DDH is district development housing district, and then NC twenty is neighborhood conservation with the twenty, twenty square feet.
Twenty thousand, twenty thousand.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, twenty thousand, uh, square feet minimum. So it's about, about half-acre lots, and so, I said, so I'll prove the rezoning, and then the conditional use request is for multi-unit development with eight units. And so it's one of the things that we kind of talked about in one of the meetings with these, we really do, we really should come up with a different definition or a different word kind of for situations like this, because I think people heard multiple-unit development about apartment complex, but this is eight, eight single-family detached homes. And so what's making a multiple-unit development is that these are eight separate buildings on one lot of record. And so that really just has to do with how it's platted. And so normally, when you see single-family lots on a one lot, that's just, it's a fee simple situation instead of a multiple-unit development. So I said, so functionally, it'll still look the same, it'll look like a neighborhood, it'll look like a traditional subdivision, it just has, if you actually pulled up the record books and looked at a plat book, it's only on one lot. And so as I said, from a density standpoint, I think also from the, I think, waves of public engagement that the developer took on themselves, I, I think, like, like the gentleman spoke earlier, they did not, people were not a fan of the first iteration of it, and I think that was made very clear to them. And so I think just kind of from the staff side, the, the rezoning, this wasn't a drastic shift from the surrounding area, this is really just adding, going from the one lot on three acres to eight units on the three acres, which is still in line with the density of the surrounding area. And so like I said, I think that is something that we may look at, but that is something that we have discussed of, we probably need to come up with a different name instead of putting it out that it's a multiple-unit development and then giving people, you know, heart palpitations, just kind of around, say, you know, the apartment complex at the top of my neighborhood already can't get out, kind of deal. So with that, turn it over to y'all for any questions.
I might add that the DDH carries the single-family definition, so there should be only one family per unit in this.
Correct, correct. And so, and, and I guess kind of the, the other part of this, so even DDH, like I kind of mentioned, it's sought after by a lot of developers when they do rezonate things because the density is five and a half units per acre, and so on three acres, I mean, they could have done sixteen, seventeen, really, really close to that, and so this is only only half of that. And so like I said, I think it's really going to be in line with kind of the character from a lot size standpoint. It's really just only on one lot, so it had to be called a multiple-unit development by definition.
Thank you. This also requires public hearing for conditional use, so if anybody would like to speak to the conditional use. Yes, ma'am?
We live in the back of the neighborhood, and we're not privy to any of this information. Where do you get, where can I see this kind of thing?
It is put out on the city's website, and then if you are a homeowner that touches this property, you get the letter.
Touches?
And the homeowners' association.
The burnt-down house property?
And then the homeowners' association usually gets an email, or the president knows to-
Okay, we, we're a condo association in the back that have to use the ingress, ingress and egress of those two options.
And this is Sugar Creek's HOA and not Moores Mill's HOA?
I'm just saying, we are influenced by this project. We have to go in and out those roads, so why, why have we not heard? I don't know where this is planning going in and out, I can't read that small print. Where can I see these things?
Yeah, I guess if, if you have any, any other questions or anything, I just want to let you to finish your public hearing, and then I guess we'll, we'll close the public hearing, and then I can, I can address how we notice people afterwards.
That are affected by the changes?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not in that HOA, but I have to go in and out of there all day long.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else who would like to speak for this conditional use? Seeing no one, close the public hearing.
So just kind of, I think like the past several meetings, we've had people come out, just kind of questioning and wondering about just the city's noticing policy, and so notices, public notices are governed by state law, and so there's the adjoining property owners, so APOs, and so those go out to the people who are literally touching the property who will be affected. And then some of them have, you know, boundaries, and so sometimes cities have them where they're five hundred feet, some might be three hundred feet, and then the city does go to extra mile. We have someone who is like a neighborhood liaison coordinator who kind of handles these things, reviews our agenda, goes to our, comes to the preliminary meetings where we see all of the applications, and then they'll contact the affected HOAs in the area. And so they have a, so they have a relationship with the HOA presidents, they'll give them a heads up, and then that way, if there's any meetings or anything, that way that we can kind of head off a lot of the, you know, public backlash at some of these things. And so the city does go to a lot of effort to make sure that people are aware of this. I think, you know, from an adjoining property owner standpoint, and just kind of some of the, you know, buffers that are required, like I said, that's state law, but like I said, the city does go above and beyond that. We have a, a neighborhood relations person who handles these things directly, and really kind of addresses the HOAs, lets them know, really kind of encourages the developers to reach out and kind of have these conversations. So that's kind of what governs it, and I, I guess it sounds like you're just kind of right outside of that boundary, but I think, I think kind of going forward, as I said, we've had extensive conversations on it, and I think our, kind of our position is that we're already kind of going, going above and beyond, and like, you know, like, so we put the information out on the website, you know, we have, we put signs out on the physical sites, I mean, the city really does do a great job, and I think it's a lot of effort from staff, like I said, we have a person whose sole job is to just kind of handle these things, we also, you should see kind of like, I mean, what the boundaries are. I think some people sometimes have been going for like an hour and a half putting signs out on the physical locations when we have something, maybe on Beehive and then all the way up on Entminger Road. So, so like I said, the city does go to a great length to make sure that this is noticed. Really sorry that you weren't aware of this, I guess, until like relatively recently.
And you can always stop into the planning office.
Yeah.
Have a discussion at length.
Yeah, please call, we will, someone will answer. We will answer your questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for applicant and our staff? Or comments or motions?
Before we do that, can, can you read that recommendation? I'm not sure I understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, so, so it's kind of on, on the digital one that we actually, actually published, there was a typo, but the corrected version is that it's forwarded to city council with a recommendation for approval. And so normally, all approvals are really just kind of with approval and not conditions. There was a, there was a typo, that, that's on the physical part.
If it goes away, then.
Yep, 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 yep.
Okay, thank you.
Recommendation with approval, sorry about that.
Makes more sense. And so moved, I moved that CU twenty twenty-four zero three zero be approved. Second.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a request for a revised conditional use approval for a multiple-unit development located at fourteen fifteen Sarah Lane. The property is owned DDH, and you guys recommended approval, and city council approved the original conditional use back in October of last year, and that was for thirty-one units, multiple-unit development on this property, and they are requesting now to add three additional units. It only slightly increases the density from three point one two to three point four two, so it's only a slight difference in the density, and we do recommend approval, and I did not receive any correspondence on this. If anybody has any questions, I will be happy to answer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This also requires a public hearing. I'll open that now, if anyone would like to come forward and speak on the one Auburn multiple-unit development. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing.
Move to approve CU twenty twenty-four zero two four. Second.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
For this request.
Won't be able to see anybody anymore.
We got to figure out the agendas better. The applicant is requesting a recommendation to city council for a commercial support use, a warehouse and distribution center to be located at three ten, thirty-ten Beehive Road. The property is located in the industrial- The property is located in the industrial district, uh, west of Auburn Tech Park. Along Beehive Road. This was the original site of Sonic Tools, which was approved by city council, uh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, that was for a similar request for a warehouse and distribution center, but it was a much larger scale. It was about a hundred thousand square foot facility. This is only thirty thousand square feet. Uh, staff has no issues with this request. It is in line with the, uh, future land use. Well, I'm, I'll, I'll backtrack a little bit and say that the original request was abandoned by the applicant during DRT, um, which never went through. But this is a, a new applicant, um, new business, I guess, taking hold here. And this is in line with the future land use, the zoning of the area, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. This also requires a public hearing. If anybody would like to come forward about this. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Move to approve CU twenty twenty-four zero twenty-nine.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and several seconds. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, the last case before you tonight is a request for a waiver to allow a subdivision off of a private drive. The subject property is located at five twenty-five Auburn Drive. It's in the NC twelve zoning district, which requires a minimum lot size of twelve thousand square feet. This is a rendering of the proposed subdivision. The lot here would be subdivided across from east to west, creating these north and south lots. Both of the lots would meet the twelve thousand square foot minimum lot size. In nineteen ninety-seven, the right-of-way in front of the subject property was vacated by the city council, which left, um, a small sliver of access for the subject property. The, let me go back here. The northern lot would access off of this ten-foot private drive. It is, um, unpaved and let's see here. Staff is recommending denial of this waiver. The private drive does not support emergency vehicle access and application of our regulations does not deprive the owner of any reasonable use of the property. If the commission is, um, agreeable to approving the waiver, I did add a couple of conditions in my staff report. One being that the plat shall include a note that no further subdivision is permitted. And that no variances would be allowed to facilitate development of the northern lot. And I would ask that if you are to approve the, um, the waiver, that you strike the second condition. I was just on a tear that day. And I don't think that we can really condition that. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Now, can I quick? Lot four, how is it accessed?
It accesses from the private drive.
On the private drive? And so does the, I don't see the number of the lot, but Bestie Seals?
Yes. There are two to the north of the drive, excuse me, three to the north that access the private drive. And then one lot, the one in the middle there, um, on the south uses, well, no?
No.
There's one of those lots that also uses that private drive.
And they are non-conforming?
And emergency vehicles can not get to them?
Um, as I understand it, it is the, our fire chief responded, um, he said that the nearest fire hydrant is about twelve hundred feet away.
And who owns the private drive?
I'm not quite sure. It was part of a petition or a partition agreement and a deed from nineteen twenty-three.
I bet Warren could tell us.
The applicant is here also, and I'm sure he'd like to speak. Okay. Thank you. Um, this does require a public hearing. If I could go ahead and, and, and have that. Public hearing for Auburn Drive. Is this the applicant? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. You're the applicant.
Yes.
You can speak at any time.
Name is Larkin Wade. Live at five two-five Auburn Drive. I've lived on Auburn Drive for fifty-five years. I lived on Auburn Drive when it was not paved. When the soil from Auburn Drive would wash down to Sherwakla Drive. And I would go down with my pickup truck, moving back up to the top of the hill and next morning it washed down to the bottom of the hill.
Those were the good old days, right?
I've lived on Auburn Drive with my wife, Pat, who is here. Uh, when, for some reason or another, from the bar of Belabon, uh, cutting around to Sherwakla, it was a through street. We lost a lot of mailboxes. Hadley Weaver and I and Danny Phipps formed an, uh, an LLC, petitioned the city to put in a, a, a traffic calming device, uh, which did happen. And so over the years, after a while, um, the properties started being developed. For instance, lot number four. I never suspected that it would be built on. And going back to our lot, the one we built on in nineteen sixty-nine, twenty years later, if you look at the map, you'll see to the west of lot four, you will see a Bestie Seals estate. Uh, when the estate was settled, we simply bought the lot of Bestie Seals and tacked it on to our original lot. Once again, we never thought there would be development, but slowly but surely. Uh, there've been three new houses built in the last five or six years, two renovations. And the last lot in that particular area of, of west Auburn Drive is the lot which is crosshatched. That's the lot we're proposing be put back as a lot like it was before we tacked it on to our property. Now, since there's a home built on lot four under the name Armacher at the time, that was Dick Armacher when he passed, he came on the market, it was sold. And then another lot, which is now five oh-one Auburn Drive, which is one, two, three spaces to the left of the name Armacher. Uh, that was bought and built on. And then the cottage, under the words Bestie Seals, it was demolished and it was built on in the last two years. And then the Armacher lot, number four, was built on in the last five years. So our request is simple. We were there when all of the improvements occurred. We had to petition the city over and over again for one particular benefit or another. And I'm asking that you grant an approval to subdivide and create the lot which we before added to our property. And I'm invoking some of your own writing. In cases where the strict application of any of these regulations would result in peculiar and practical difficulties or exceptional and under, and undue hardship, the planning commission may modify the application of the regulations to relieve such difficulty or hardship. I work for the university. I'm not a wealthy person. But we all know those kinds of lots that close to Auburn, within five minutes, walking time, to Tuma's Corner is now valuable. And other people have benefited from developing those lots, and I'd like to share in the benefit. Are there any questions?
Doesn't appear they do tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners? But once was a lot.
I move to approve the waiver twenty twenty-four zero.
I'll second it.
What do you say?
I move to approve the waiver.
I have the waiver.
Before we vote, we have a little discussion.
Uh-huh.
So who can say anything on the staff side, uh, about the access? I mean, that, it looks, ten feet doesn't look like enough to put any kind of truck down there. How do they, how do they access the current, the buildings that are?
Yeah, the current residents.
Yeah, what, what do they?
Yeah, so, so there were, uh, several, I, I, I guess there was, there was another situation where, uh, a house was rebuilt, just kind of right off the strap, but it was kind of already like an existing situation. Um, and as the thought process was there, there that it was just essentially kind of grandfathered in. And then just kind of normally how we handle things, if there is a situation where it is existing and it's grandfathered, we try not to create new situations that also have the same concerns. And so there's, so that was why, so it was a, that's kind of where we're at on the, on the private drive and like the emergency access and that kind of enhancing that. And I guess also there's the access part, but I think there's an, there should be another slide where it shows the floodplain. I'm going to keep going through. Yeah, so this is kind of the proposed floodplain. And so this also would be a lot that's not really buildable if, um, I mean, the buildable area had to be a pretty small footprint for, for there to be a house. They probably have to come back to us with variances, um, for, uh, so there's the access concern, but there's also just like the newly adopted, uh, FEMA maps that would also affect this property.
Okay. The applicant, yes, sir? Will you please come forward?
At least part of the property.
Yep.
In two thousand and twelve, when the city reviewed the national insurance. Whatever. There's so many acronyms involved with that. When, when the floodplain insurance maps were reviewed, uh, we discovered that a portion of our property was in the floodplain, but not the house. You could walk outside and see that, that the house was not in the floodplain. And so we hired an engineering firm to do the elevations on the house. And then we applied for the LOMA, the letter of map adjustment, to FEMA, and that was approved. Now, the topography on, uh, that lot is just like the lot number four, and it's just like the lot which is crosshatched. They all have the same topography. And, um, you basically have enough room to build on, on the upper slope, and then the yard is in the floodplain. Now, keep in mind that that little stream, uh, services a forty-acre watershed, and that it has three retention ponds, one directly behind Glendale, one north of Thatch and one south of Thatch, all related to previous developments. Since we've lived on the lot for fifty-five years, we have never once seen, with those particular structures in place, we've never once seen the stream get out of its banks. So there's enough buildable space elevation without worrying about the floodplain.
Thank you. So the question is really, can this go back to being a lot on private drive?
That's under the, you know, it's, doesn't really meet any kind of city standard for any kind of access for any kind of services.
I have a motion. Are we done with discussion? I have a motion and a second.
Also, if you would remember my request to strike, um, the second condition.
Ah, yes.
End my motion to strike the second condition.
Second.
Motion and a second. The amended motion. Okay, so we would like.
What about the first condition? We haven't talked about that one. The plat shall not, shall include a note that no further subdivision.
Yeah, it's my intent that the original motion included this condition, so.
We have a motion and a second on an amended.
Would you, good, restate them?
The current one that we need to vote on is the amended one that removes planning comment number two.
Maintains number one.
I didn't remove lot one. I mean, I didn't. I just said, all for the question.
I'm good, I'm good.
The Robert rules is coming out. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the amended to remove number two comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, lackluster, but. Okay, great. And now we'll go back to motion number one, which did not remove number two comment. And we need to vote on that. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? You shouldn't be.
Favor what? What's the motion?
We need to get rid of it.
We can't approve the original motion that included comment two.
The amended motion gets rid of the original one.
Nope, it's not. I can't wait for the books. I'm so sorry. Either way, right this second, we need to get rid of this original motion to get out of this. All those in favor? I want you to vote no on the original.
Going to vote on the original motion, no.
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 All those in favor?
No. Also no.
Out of camp. So we are.
We're good. Now, we've got to have a new motion. No, we already have.
All right. Somebody listens to this.
Meeting is a barn burner, kids.
The result, we approve the one that removed comment number two. Reeves.
Okay, wait, wait, okay. So, so just to recap.
Yes.
All right, so y'all have voted and approved the waiver to subdivide off the private street. With comment, singular comment number one. All right, no comment number two, but we have voted to approve the waiver for them to subdivide.
Yes.
All right, all right, just so we're clear. Okay, we're good.
Do you need us to do a roll call vote again?
No, I'm, I'm good, I'm good on the votes. Do, do you need a roll call, Tiffany?
I'm good.
All right, there we go. Okay, now. Now, on the Reeves Town Home, uh, the appeal to the denial, um, from the engineering department. Now, there was, uh, it's been removed, moved from the agenda. The applicant reached out. Uh, I just got lost kind of in the, a lot of the fever of, of the discussion at the top of the meeting. Uh, applicant reached out and asked that this be pulled from the, from the agenda, uh, because they and staff have agreed that there's still more discussion that needs to be had. And so it was their request that they wanted it to be pulled. But I guess also, I do want to state though, that they did file the appeal within the timeframe for it to be a relevant appeal. And so if it does come, so if it does need to come back, uh, next month, uh, that is a request that we will honor, even though it will be outside of the timeframe. So I just wanted to state that.
Yes, I understand that. Um, and we do have some chairman's communications this evening. As this is the last meeting, that we will have three members with us. Mr. Warren McCord, Mr. Bob Redmott, and Mrs. Robin Bridges. So we will, we will sadly depart from you, but you'll be missed.
Anybody who's out there listening, serve your city in some fashion. If you're, if you're here listening to this meeting, then you are halfway there. Go be of service. Thank you. And from staff communications, anything?
Yeah, so, uh, just, I just want to, want to second, um, what Cherry said. I greatly appreciate having the pleasure to know all three of you. Um, saddened that y'all are leaving, rolling off. Um, I, I, I really do feel like, Warren, like you should get like a golden plaque or something. You should like petition the council. Of like, I was just longest-serving.
Just when he thought it was out.
I have a plaque, it's on my wall.
Oh my gosh, you need another one.
This time though, he got a card with a note in it. Feel like it's sealed?
Yeah.
I can't come back after this.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I, like I said, I, I, I think generally, uh, genuinely, um, really appreciate the work that y'all put in. It's, uh, it's very demanding. I think for a lot of people, you know, in some places, planning commission's kind of ho-hum. You know, you just kind of got to show up to meetings once a month. I mean, we have the packet lunches, you know, there's a lot of information. There's a lot of expectations that y'all be here, work sessions and et cetera. And so, I mean, just for the dedication over the years that y'all have served, I mean, I greatly appreciate it. Like I said, I mean, just kind of doing your civic duty, doing all your part to kind of help Auburn be a better place. So I greatly appreciate it. So thank you, thank you very much.
You're not ho-hum.
Thanks, staff. Y'all are awesome.
Yay. The next work session's, right? We're going to be on the calendar, we're going to get.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, so then, like I was saying, so just kind of the timeline with the subdivision regs update. So staff's kind of working on the internal staff changes. We'll have those done by the end of the month. And then it will go to legal in the first week of August. And then we'll discuss it, just kind of packing lunch, just kind of, kind of where we landed on that. And then once legal kind of gets their revisions back, then they'll come back, then that will come back to you for the subdivision regs. Then on, same thing with the PUD, we're kind of working to finalize that as well. That's another thing that needs to go to legal for review. And then once we have the legal review on it and just kind of making sure that the framework, the process works and kind of keeps us out of hot wor, water, that will then be another thing that we schedule a work session for. And so that'll be late summer kind of deal as well, so I think probably August. With the PUD situation. And then just kind of another amendment that they all will see, there'll be a new business on, on the August agenda, will be an amendment to the zoning regulation on commercial square footage requirement in, in the downtown corridor, or not the downtown corridor, but the downtown zoning district.
Okay, Urban Core.
Yep, Urban Core, there we go.
What about optimal boundary?
Yeah, it's, yeah, 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 yeah. So, like, like I said, so there is a planned, I, I guess, there's a, we're working on scheduling the work sessions with council for the comprehensive plan land use update. And so that'll include the future land use plan. They also will, will include the optimal boundary changes. And then also the zoning, the future land use changes as well. And so that just needs to go on the calendar. We're working through budget session. I mean, there's just a lot of things right now that we're working through as a city and just that needs council's attention. And so we're just kind of plugging along, kind of putting dates on the calendar right now. And then also this is all in the background with 2040 happening as well. So just a busy, busy time in Auburn.
Just send us an email.
Will do.
And we need to adjourn, I mean, do we need a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
I moved.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Great.
All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Thank you.